7:00 PM, I would like to officially call the Monday, January 25th, 2021 Common Council Meeting to order. Clerk Jones, I believe that you would like to make some comments regarding the link for this meeting and other expectations. Clerk Jones?
Good evening, members of the public. For audio quality, we will be muting everyone not speaking by default to maintain good audio quality for the council and yourselves. If you would like to speak during the meeting on a specific agenda item, please submit your requests in the chat. Directions to do so are in the chat. We ask that you provide your name and your address, as those are required for all speakers at in-person meetings. If you would like to be called on during the meeting to provide public input, please insert the following into the chat, and you'll be called on during the relevant time for the public input. For citizens that wish to speak during the privilege of the floor, please insert your name and your address into the chat, and the council president will call on you. You will be given five minutes.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. Due to the executive order by Indiana Governor Eric Holcomb, the South Bend Common Council meeting will be legally held by way of a virtual meeting by using Microsoft Teams. At this time, I'm so pleased to be able to introduce Mr. Mike Holtenland, who will give our invocation. He is the Spiritual Life Director of Hope Ministries, South Bend, Indiana. You mute it.
I don't do a lot of these virtual meetings, so I just want to make sure you can hear me.
Yes, we can now. You were muted at first, but welcome.
Thank you. Let's pray together. Dear Father, the One who rules from the heavens, may your good name be treasured and loved, especially in our city. Please bring about your agenda, and may your will be done here on earth, and especially in our city, just the way it is done in heaven. Give us tonight the things we need tonight. Please grant your guidance and wisdom to those who will discuss issues and make decisions. Forgive us, Father, for the times when we have failed to seek the good of our city. Forgive us for the times we have not protected the most vulnerable. Forgive us for the times we have not appropriately considered the impact on all parties who would be affected by decisions. And help us forgive those who we perceive to be guilty of doing the very same things. Father, please keep us and our city from unnecessary troubles and difficulties, and deliver our city from the troubles and evils that have already taken root in it. This city, the power to make it better, and the credit for making it better ultimately all belong to you. May it be so. Amen.
Thank you for that beautiful invocation. We'll now move to a roll call. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis?
Henry Zier.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Councilmember Warner?
Here.
Councilmember Wax?
Present.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Present.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Present.
Councilmember Hammond?
Present.
Vice President McBride?
Present.
President White?
Present.
Nine present.
Thank you so much. We'll now go to the report from the Subcommittee on Minutes. Clerk Jones?
Yes. To the Common Council of the City of South Bend, the Subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the January 4th, 2021 meeting of the council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept the Subcommittee on Minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. The Subcommittee on Minutes have been approved. For those of you who are present to speak in response to Bill 57-20, please know that this bill would not be heard that because it was not passed out of the committee and won't be considered tonight. We'll now move to special business, and this is a special resolution in honor of the Morris Performing Arts 100 Year Celebration. Clerk Jones, will you pull up that resolution, please?
Okay, I'm waiting on it to be shared.
Uh huh, thank you. And while the resolution is being shared, I'm just very, very pleased to be able to present this special resolution along with Councilwoman Sharon McBride. And part of our presentation will also include comments from Mr. Aaron Perry, Director of Venues, Parks, and Arts.
I'm still waiting on the resolution to come up. Okay, let's see if I can.
While we're waiting, just want to give some general, oh, here we go. Thank you, Clerk Jones. Councilwoman McBride and myself, we will introduce and read the resolution. I would take the first four whereas, and she would take the last four whereas. Again, this is Bill 21-0, which is a special proclamation. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, recognizing the Morris 100 Year Celebration Committee. Whereas the Morris Performing Arts Center is a performance venue owned by the City of South Bend, and whereas the building was originally opened in 1922 under the name of the Palais Theatre, and whereas Al Morris purchased the theatre to save it for demolition in 1959 and sold it to the City of South Bend for $1. And whereas the Morris Performing Arts Center was expanded and restored in 1999 by a dedicated group of community members, and?
Whereas throughout its nearly 100-year history, the Morris has inspired hundreds of thousands of audience members, men, women, and children alike, through its world-class offerings of plays, movies, concerts, musicals, symphonic, and other forms of live performance arts. Whereas the Morris Performing Arts Center is an undeniable cultural and economic influence in the South Bend region. Whereas the Morris Performing Arts Center seeks certain internal repairs and to make additional upgrades, establish an equity and arts program as well as capital endowment. And whereas a committee of diverse local volunteers is formed to plan the 100 Year Celebration and adjacent capital campaign related to the projects above chaired by the South Bend residents Greg and Mary Downs. And?
Continue. And now therefore be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana as follows. Section 1, the Common Council hereby again expresses its strong support of and for the Morris 100 Year Celebration Committee and establish it as an official committee of the City of South Bend. Councilmember McBride, will you read section 2 and 3, please?
The Common Council will hold at least one seat on the Morris 100 Year Celebration Committee. Section 3, the resolution shall be in full force and effect from after its adoption by the Common Council and approval by the mayor.
Thank you. Prior to going to the public portion, I will ask Mr. Aaron Perry to offer comments. We'll go to the privilege of the floor, and then we'll come back to council members for any questions or any statements that you would like to make. At this time, Mr. Aaron Perry.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Thank you, President White and Vice President McBride for sponsoring and supporting this initiative. I should note also that Vice President McBride is the Chair of the Park Committee, through which the Morris filters up, and President White has agreed to also serve on the Morris 100 Committee. So thank you for your service. In addition to recognizing some of our team, I think Jeff Jarnik, he is the Director of Venues, who oversees the Morris and the fine work that happens there, and Annie Gakowsky is our Chief Development Officer, in charge of all the fundraising that will, has inevitably helped a lot of the parks projects, but will also help the Morris in the future years. I wanted to make sure I also recognize, as you did, President White and Councilmember McBride, Greg and Mary Downs. They have already taken substantial efforts to ensure this celebration is off to a great start, and that the Morris will be continued to be celebrated in grand fashion, not only throughout 2021, which is, or 2022, which is in fact the 100th year, but the time leading up to it, and then for the ensuing century to come. Morris is not only one of the older theatres in the country, it's also consistently ranked as one of the top performing theatres in the country. That combination, through our research, we've found to be pretty rare. A lot of times, these old theatres are either shuttered or kind of second-class theatres. The fact that we have such a gem, that's a historic delight, also contributing to the community at a high-quality way is fantastic. We're consistently ranked as one of the top 100 theatres in the country, usually around in the 70s. The final thing I'll note is that the formation of this committee really is to ensure that we have a safe, vibrant, equitable, and sustainable, not only ecologically sustainable, but also economically sustainable, Morris well into the future. Appreciate your support of this resolution. Wanted to recognize, President White, if you would oblige Greg and Mary Downs perhaps for a few words as well.
Thank you, Mr. Perry, and I was gonna go directly to the chairpersons of this fantastic committee and give them opportunity to share words at this time. Mr. Greg and Mary Downs.
Well, thank you, President White. We appreciate the support of the city council. We appreciate your sponsoring this resolution. You and Councilwoman McBride, we appreciate the support of the mayor, and we certainly appreciate the support of the entire department at VPA. It's a great team, and we look forward to the next 100 years.
Thank you. Mary Downs, would you like to make any comments?
I would just like to say we're very excited about doing this project for our city, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you so much. We appreciate the two of you and your commitment and the work that you've done thus far. Clerk Jones, we'll now move to the public hearing portion. Clerk Jones, is there anyone present wishing to speak in support of the special resolution Bill 21-0?
I don't see anyone from the public wishing to speak on this bill.
Okay. So there's no one waiting to speak in support or in opposition?
No, there is none.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, wait a second, someone just raised their hand. Let me see who that is. Okay, I see they put their hand down, so.
Okay.
No longer see it.
Okay, now the public hearing portion is now closed. At this time, I would go to council members and ask council members, would you like to add any comments in regards to this special resolution? If so, please raise your hand. The first hand I saw was Councilman Kenneth Lee, followed by Councilwoman Rachel Tomas Morgan, and Councilwoman Lori Hammond. Hopefully, I have everyone in order based on when I noticed your hand. At first, we have Councilman Kenneth Lee.
Yes, thank you, President White. I just want to say to Aaron Perry and to all of those involved with the Morris Civic, we are so proud that it has stood the test of time and lasted this long, over 100 years, almost 100 years. And again, with all of the different theatres across the state of Indiana, I know that the Morris is one of the best-looking, well-kept venues in the state of Indiana. So we're excited for all of the great things that's gonna happen for the Morris in the coming years, and we're ecstatic that the Morris is celebrating 100 years. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I believe the next council person was Councilwoman Rachel Tomas Morgan, followed by Councilwoman Lori Hammond.
Thank you, President White and Vice President McBride for bringing this resolution to us. I couldn't be prouder and join my other council colleagues in thanking you, Aaron, for your work and the work of your team, to Mary and Greg for your continued commitment to the Morris at this 100-year anniversary and the many years leading up to this. It truly is a gem in our community and builds on the quality of life to attract people and increase the arts. I can't wait for the doors to open again and to get in there, so look forward to that day, hopefully soon.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lori Hammond?
Thank you, President White. I just want to echo what my fellow council members have said. I want to extend a huge thank you to Mary and Greg Downs for the time commitment and the energy that you are putting forth, and I'm just so thankful for the Morris and what it brings to our community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other council members who would like to share comments? Councilman Troy Warner?
Thank you, President White. I noticed Ms. Nizgatsky is still waiting.
I'm sorry. I will go with Councilwoman Sheila Nizgatsky, followed by you, Councilman Troy Warner.
Oh, thank you, Councilman Warner, I appreciate that. I just want to echo my fellow council members, 100 years is quite an achievement, and I thank you and Councilwoman McBride for bringing, and to Aaron and to the Downs for their commitment to 100-year celebration. They bring such, you know, you have the Broadway Theatre League that comes there, and those performances are just wonderful. And when you look at the arts, the impact that it has in our community, even for our children, you know, everyone knows as you develop through the arts, music, literature, the stage, it helps the children as they're growing excel further in their schooling. So this is a wonderful celebration for our city. When I seen the date, 1922, I would be remiss if I didn't say our company started in 1922. So to think that those two, that a business in that venue have been in our community that long, it's truly an achievement. So thank you so much for bringing this to the council.
Thank you. I'll now go to Councilman Troy Warner.
Thank you, President White. I will repeat everything that everybody said, but I have a couple of questions for Mr. Perry, if I could put him on the hot seat. First, is The Lion King coming back? And second, do you think we can get Hamilton here anytime soon?
Well, we can follow up with more specifics. The Lion King has promised to come back. We don't have a date set in stone yet, obviously, with all the routing and Broadway in New York's even still closed, so we've got some time to figure that out. And we also have been in conversations with Hamilton. I believe their staff has visited the Morris and we're a suitable theatre, it's just not yet on the calendar. So future years, maybe a year 101, we have something to look forward to.
Okay, keep working on it, boss.
Jeff, I know Jeff's on the call, so that's on his shoulders, but I'll never, Buck stops here, but Jeff heard it here first as well.
Thank you so much. Are there any other comments coming from council members? I do not, I do not see any hands. I will now like to entertain a motion to accept the special resolution in honor of the Morris 100 Year Celebration.
I'll make that motion.
Second, it's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
A resounding aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Davis? Councilmember Davis? Must be muted. Councilmember Davis? President White?
Aye.
Right now, eight ayes.
Thank you. The resolution has passed, and I too look forward to Hamilton. We'll now move to reports from the city officers. We're so fortunate to have before us our own mayor, Mayor James Mueller, who will give general remarks as we began 2021. Our mayor.
Thank you, President White, and good evening, council members. It's great to see you even virtually here in 2021, as we really are on the home stretch of what's been a difficult time for all of us in dealing with the COVID-19 pandemic. So do want to start there with my remarks and give a few more higher-level remarks as well of what to expect here in 2021 and as we go forward, and then in conclusion would be happy to answer any questions that you have for me or things we could follow up on. So, you know, first, some encouraging news, as you've been following, the numbers both nationally and at our state level and here locally have been falling since the holiday spike. And, you know, the levels that we're at today, before the spike started in October, it would be among the highest that it had been all last year, but from where we had been at the peak in November, about three times where we are today, and particularly our neighboring county, Elkhart County, is, you know, closer to 25 or 24 cases per 100,000 per day, which is really phenomenal from where they were. And so it's a combination of what was overwhelming our health systems or had the potential to overwhelm our health systems was the whole region. So seeing our neighboring county go down and us go down as well, you know, we're very encouraged by that, and this would be especially good news as the vaccine's been rolling out, if not for a couple, you know, curveballs that are coming our way. As you know, there are more contagious variants that have formed in other parts of the world, and they are here in the US as well. And I think we just saw an alert earlier today that the Brazilian variant that's more contagious has made its way and confirmed to be in Minnesota. So, you know, a lot of hopeful signs, numbers coming down, which is great, but the introduction of these new variants gives us some concern that things could still spiral out of control. But this is, we're now in a race to get the vaccine distributed as quickly as possible, especially to the most vulnerable residents. And so, you know, as you know, a lot of the long-term nursing home facilities have received doses and are moving to get their second dose, and, you know, they accounted for about a third of the deaths over the past year or so. And then also in terms of eligibility, in Indiana, 70-plus accounted for another, you know, outside of the long-term care facilities, accounted for another large fraction of the deaths that we saw last year. So by the time we get to March or April timeframe, and we hope we can continue this pace of vaccine distribution and ramp up even, you know, the vulnerable groups should by and large have inoculations. And so everything that we can do right now in the next few weeks while the vulnerable groups get inoculated, literally will save lives. We've been saying that, you know, for a year, but right now, not allowing the new variants to take hold, not allowing another big spike, are, will be lives saved here in our community. And so, you know, we're, we hope that you can help spread the word about the need to remain vigilant, especially over the next couple of months, so that we can get our vulnerable folks inoculated. As you probably saw, we worked with their county partners here at the County City Building and came up with a metrics-based approach to when to reopen to the public, and that's essentially when, by the state criteria, we go back as a county into the yellow category. So we're at the orange category now and the yellow category. It, you know, not to have a crystal ball, but, you know, I would, I would expect if we can maintain the trajectory we're on right now where the cases are falling and we don't have another spike, you know, that would put us sometime in the middle of February to reopen to the public, you know, possibly late February. But that would be, that would be the goal as of now, but, you know, we never, this is metric, this is based off the data, so, you know, we have to see how the cases go forward. On the vaccines, I know there's been a lot of talk and frustration in terms of, and confusion, quite frankly, and that stems from the very top all the way down. We'll say our local health officials are managing a very difficult situation rather well. You know, they don't, they, there's never been a clear communication on how many doses are coming to our county at any given time, except maybe a few days ahead of time, and there's never been clear communication to the extent that they will be responsible for distribution, because there's a, so private partners who are distributing doses, what extent do the health systems play, as well as our county health department. But they fielded the uncertainty, they've set up a distribution center over on Western Avenue at St. Hedwig's, and from all, everything that I've heard is that's going rather well, and people are impressed with the professionalism and the efficiency that that distribution site has. So we don't, you know, like I said, the uncertainty continues, we don't know what the state's plans are for a week or two out, and so we'll continue to monitor that. But if, you know, if we are able to ramp up the supply here locally, they're ready to ramp up the distribution here as well. So we'll continue to manage the information as it comes to us. But as we're on this home stretch, we're also looking forward to the day where our economy can be open and we can really get back to the business of rebuilding and full recovery. You know, I want to put a reminder that we received over $7 million of loan capital from the CARES Act last year, and those applications are open for businesses who need some financing capacity. So, you know, go to the website, our city website, southbendin.gov, spread the word that our loan fund is still accepting applications for those who need that kind of financial help. Also, the restaurant innovation grants are looking to launch later this week, and that's from the appropriation that you made available in December last month. And so that's, that basically goes to help the industry that's been hit particularly hard due to social distancing measures, and also groups that have had to make investments they otherwise wouldn't have, whether it's more outdoor dining, heaters to facilitate that, barriers, all sorts of different. that, barriers, all sorts of different innovations that have happened, that they've had to make investments, all while business has been hit and they've had trouble, you know, getting through this difficult time. The other pieces, over the break, you saw Congress pass an extension of some of the relief efforts, which includes a second round of the PPP program, as well as extension of unemployment benefits. So, you know, the PPP program in this current version, I believe it provides a little more favorability to the restaurant industry by giving them an extra month of that support. So I believe it's three and a half months of qualifying expenses that should be, loans that can be forgiven if they meet the criteria. So that will hopefully help our businesses make it through. You know, the winter in particular is really tough, because even, even what had been moving in outdoor dining has now been taken away by the cold. And even though we've had a better winter than many, it's still, if you go around, you won't see too many people braving the cold to eat outside. So hopefully, these two things, and we'll continue to look for ways to help our small and local businesses that are struggling as we get through this home stretch. Then a quick update on where we are in public safety. Our officer levels are roughly staying steady. So we're still below where we, you know, need to be long-term in the 220 sworn officers, but we have averted, at least for now, the, you know, what was a crisis scenario of really falling short in number of sworn officers. And I thank the council for all of the work that you've done to, both in terms of the wage negotiations last year, but also just supporting our public servants that account for nearly a fourth of our city employees. That's helpful in maintaining morale in a difficult job and making sure that our department is able to maintain levels of officers that we need, and hopefully we can get back to the levels that we set forth in budgets and goals. The use of force policy also, there was a draft presented to the Board of Public Safety last week. It's another iteration based off of a public comment from what happened just before the holidays. And so we think it's very close. We hope the Board of Public Safety will adopt it at its next meeting in February. And so we'll be closing, we're hopefully closing in on that piece, and we can turn our attention to many of the other recommendations from 21 CP. We will be putting out a letter to particular groups who gave detailed feedback and some of the things we weren't able to include and just explain, you know, why, the rationale of what we can include and what we couldn't include. So that should be coming out in the week or, in a week or so. And then, of course, there's the resolution tonight to move forward with the civilian review board, and, you know, thank you for really digging in on that and getting the i's dotted and the t's crossed. There was, you know, it may not seem like a big deal, but, you know, when there's things that are passed that are different, it's hard to know which one, you know, when they're contradictory. It leaves a lot of questions about which one is binding or which one is the, which was, which is the right direction to go. So do appreciate the council members, particularly Councilmember Tomas Morgan, for really digging deep into the details on that, and Clerk Jones and her staff for working through all the different pieces. This is a, this is a difficult one, where it's, this is a council initiative, and there are nine council members, so, you know, nine members. You know, I was talking to some wee blows the other day, and they asked, what's the most difficult part of my job? And, you know, I said, well, can you agree with your brothers and sisters about toppings for pizza? Imagine, you know, nine members trying to figure out, you know, some of these more complicated things. So, you know, this will continue to be, you know, it's, we'll continue, just need to stay in communication and work hard to incorporate all the different feedback. As again, I see this as, you know, this is a council initiative, and there is a separation from the executive branch, but it does need to interface with the executive branch and internal affairs in particular. And so we stand ready to help in any way possible to make this seamless and efficient as possible. So please know that the administration is ready to, you know, help in any way that the council members or Clerk Jones would like to see us engage in. Also, later this week, we'll be announcing the awardees to the ALIVE grants, and this was the, this was the appropriation for the 2020 budget that got delayed due to COVID. And so the appropriation for this year has not been awarded yet for, so we'll work on that as we move forward through 2021. Then, you know, in terms of our neighborhoods' priority, the, we are looking next week to release a draft roads, street maintenance plan. And in that, it'll include a three-year plan to, a very detailed three-year plan about which road sections will receive repaving or remilling or all the sorts of treatments. And do encourage council members to, when that gets released, look at the list and see if we're missing, you know, roads that you think are in need of, desperate need of repair. And so the approach that we're taking here is, you know, there's, there are objective ratings of roads, and they're scaled 1 through 10. And so we're trying to prioritize so that we don't have any failed roads after this three-year plan. And so we're prioritizing the lowest rated, but, you know, if we, if council members think there's a road that maybe got missed or didn't get rated, please, please take a look and let us know. And similarly, there's, you know, other streets, we're looking at the safety of intersections and other things. So if there are, for now, I mean, there are other, we know there are other neighborhood infrastructure priorities, but in the, you know, in the coming weeks, if council members could send their top priorities for areas on what we would call street and intersection and that type of infrastructure, please, you know, get that to us. And this is all moving toward the issuance of the bond that we talked about during budget season last, last year, and want to get a good sense, you know, the roads plan is, would define the vast majority of trying to fix our roads in an equitable manner, but then there are, there is some room for some of these other safety and other street improvement pieces. So please think about your district and try to flag, you know, our team's been looking around the city and trying to find, flag some, but please let us know what you think the top ones in your district are, and we'll compare notes and try to find, you know, it's, with infrastructure, it's what we can afford. You know, we're not going to be able to do everything all at once, but we'll keep whittling away and make progress over time. And then the, you know, I believe you heard from Director Garces at Community Investment earlier, and a lot of things going on there, including figuring out the neighborhoods group and some of, how all these pieces will fit together. There have been a lot of different groups that have, haven't been fully integrated as they've been added to the department. So this is the year we're hoping to figure out how to integrate the building and planning teams, the neighborhood development and code enforcement teams, all of these things to get them at top efficiency to deliver the services for our residents. And then, you know, the, we're excited about the Morris 100 anniversary, and we're also working with state legislators to figure out some financing to help us with the restorations and other things that are a part of the 100 year celebration. So, and get us ready to go for the next 100 years. So that's, that's good news at the state level. And then I'm sure you saw the news also that the compact with the Pocahontas Band was at least finalized between the administration, the state administration and the Pocahontas Band, and that is looking to go through the State House as well this session. So that's other good news for more investment down in the 6th District. The governor announced in a State of the State last year, last week, expanding on the regional cities program. So we were beneficiaries of the first regional cities program a few years ago, and we'll be very eager to see how the governor and the state roll that out. So that's, that's good news. Of course, there is some concerning news downstate, is oftentimes, you know, there was a wetlands bill today that wasn't, that we wouldn't see as positive, and it did make it out of committee. So we'll see what the future holds there. And then there are other, there are always a number of bills that attack things that we've done, either as a council or administration. So there's bills on the reliable bidder ordinance or responsible bidder ordinance, the, there's bills on civilian review boards, there's bills on funding for public safety, what you can and can't do. So, you know, we'll continue to monitor and hope, work with AIM in particular and other cities to try to, try to explain to the state legislature the importance and why we're doing the things we're doing, but you just know those are always hanging over our head as well as, you know, the potential impacts to our revenue stream. So there's also a bill on the business personal property tax and somehow move, you know, taking that off the books, which would not hit us as much as some other cities like Elkhart, for example, that has a lot of revenue from that, but it would still be a hit to us and would be, you know, it would cause us to have to scramble to figure out how to fill those holes. So, you know, we'll stay vigilant, but a lot of, a lot of activity at the State House. Some very good news, and we're very hopeful, and some we've got to be very vigilant about it and make sure that we come out in good shape. So with that, I'll turn it over to any questions you have.
Councilmembers, do you have any question first? Would like to thank our mayor. Okay, can you hear me somebody? I have alcohol. For that wonderful presentation, excellent information, and we're very appreciative of that, and we'll continue to look forward to hearing from you as we move forward as well. I do see one hand up, and that's Councilwoman Lori Hammond.
Thank you, President White, and thank you, Mayor Mueller, for the update. I just had a couple very quick questions. I know the county has, over the last couple of days, received a significant amount of additional CARES money, and I'm wondering if there is any additional monies you're anticipating for the city?
Well, we will check with Controller Parker. I have not heard of distributions coming to us as of yet from CARES or the new stimulus that was passed in December by Congress. I imagine there was a fair amount of money in the stimulus from December that went for vaccine distribution, that may be part of the funding streams that are coming, but we can, we can check on that. But as far as I've heard, I haven't heard any new money coming, coming our way.
Thank you. I'm also wondering, as we move into the end of January and February, when temperatures tend to drop below 20 degrees, do we have any plans in place for a warming center for the unhoused in case those temperatures become unbearable on the streets?
Yeah, I mean, we, the city has both a warming and cooling center in the summer protocol when temperatures get to a certain degree, and we can add clarity to that. I know our team is also working with the county emergency management, I always forget what the A stands for, agency or administration, EMA, in the county on guidelines for extreme weather and shelters for folks. So that is something that we do, we've done every year in an ad hoc manner, and we are looking to formalize that. The challenge is, you know, this utilizes our city facilities, you know, our community centers and others to make this possible. And, you know, there's, there's a question of, you know, if we're, if you set the threshold to a place where we're always open, then we've basically become a de facto shelter. So, you know, we're trying to balance the health and safety of the residents while maintaining the ability to use our facilities as they were intended and serve the public.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hammond.
I have.
I was going to say, I don't know if you all can see, for some reason, we're not seeing Councilmember Davis's hand.
I saw his hand.
Okay, okay.
Well, the next one is Councilman Kenneth Lee, followed by Councilmember Henry Davis. Thank you, Clerk Jones.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to see, what is our plan to get minority communities vaccinated and how we're going to go about getting, spreading the message and getting people vaccinated?
That is, you know, that is, that's a challenge that we've already identified, even with vaccine supply being, being limited. So, you know, it'll, this challenge is only going to get more challenging as more vaccine becomes available, because there'll be more people that we need to convince, and the people on the tail end are going to be, you know, ones who may think they don't need to get the vaccine, people who especially think they don't need to get the vaccine. So we're, so the good news is, we have a little bit of time to get mobilized for, you know, those populations who are less vulnerable and may think, you know, forget this vaccine. With, with those who are eligible right now, 70 and over, you know, that is, that's something that I'd love to talk to council members too, about how do we, and our health officials would love to talk as well, is how do we convince folks that the vaccine is safe and reliable and critical to their health? But there, I mean, so that's, this is a critical issue that would love to have further conversations with you, but there are also a number of, you know, PSA-type programming in the works, you know, trusted messengers, other outreach. So they're, they're in the planning phases, as well from both the, our local, our local side, all the way up to what we're hearing from the Biden administration's plans, knowing that this is a critical issue that, you know, we're, hopefully we'll see also a national campaign as well to help address this.
Okay, that's one of the things that I would love to get involved with in helping to steer that and to figure out, how do we get this message out to the community and, because it's needed, so, thank you.
Thank you. I think the next hand that went up was Councilmember Henry Davis, followed by Councilwoman Sharon McBride, followed by Councilwoman Sheila Niskoski. Clerk Jones, there's a hand that is up. I'm going to ask for your assistance as we move forward with the questions. The next person is Councilman Henry Davis Jr.
Thank you. I don't know what was happening earlier. My computer, I don't know if it was locked up or whatever. I wanted to vote. I was actually talking out loud, very loud, thinking that somebody would hear me, but I had to log off and log back in, so I'm glad I'm here again. I don't know, again, I don't know what was happening. Anyhow, James, thanks for coming to the council meeting. I really appreciate your presence right now. I have a statement that will probably evolve into a question. It's been probably about a week or so where we were interrupted in our lives with the racism discussion, unfortunately. And I remember seeing, sending an email out, not only to you, but to other members and part of the leadership of the council, expressing my, not only my dissatisfaction, but somehow or some way, I am introduced into another conversation that I have absolutely nothing to do with. But after paying attention to the discussion, newspaper article, I became even more disappointed. And the reason why I was so disappointed is that, given what was not only shown on the media, and what had been talked about, whether it's behind our closed doors or through our email, we never once, as a city, said that we do not stand, or that we do stand against this type of behavior. Now, I'm not saying that the officers that posted the picture were exactly, were doing exactly that, meaning they were exactly that, meaning they were signifying some white supremacist sign. I'm not saying that. But what I did not hear from the leadership to make people comfortable was that we stand against any forms of racism, bigotry, et cetera. And so the question that Kenneth just asked about, how do we get people to submit to testing, and not only testing, but also to vaccination, that's how you get people to submit to it. You give people a reason to believe that you're serious and that you care about them. There is too much history throughout America's history that shows that African Americans are scared to participate at the level of testing that they want us to participate in, vaccination, because it's never been a good outcome for us. And so when we had the opportunity to say, hey, we stand against this type of racism, or, or even the perceived idea of racism, we don't even wanna do that because of whoever it was that was involved. And so at some point, we're gonna have to choose a side and say, this is where we stand at, and this is our standard of living here in the city of South Bend, and we do not perform or participate in these acts. And, and I'm sure, at some point, people are gonna be able to say, hey, I agree, and whatever you guys are trying to do was getting us vaccinated. And this is just an example that we're gonna be interested in doing, because there is some form and some resemblance of support there. So my question is, is that, are we going to make an announcement? Are you gonna make an announcement? Are you gonna release a statement? I mean, I think that you probably did make say, had said something, but it wasn't very clear. It just kinda like, you know, made us feel like, okay, he's paying attention. But that's not fair. We have Eric Logan there, we still have Dylan with the tape case, all the things are going on nationally, and we, we continue to miss the opportunity to stand up against what's happening.
Is that, is...
That's the question, are we?
That's the question, yeah. I mean, we'll be, you know, we're, we're happy to, to make strong statements against racism and, and other forms of hate. And, you know, in the, in this particular incident that, that prompted the email, you know, I, we did reiterate our, our strong support for racial justice and equity, but, you know, I hear you that you're, you're, you're saying that it didn't go strong enough, and we'll be happy to find ways to make sure that message is heard loud and clear. But, you know, I, I think it's also important that, you know, the question is, does it, every time that, you know, we have to be focused on bringing people together. And, you know, I know you, you said it in, in your comments, that we have to pick a side. Well, we're all, I think, you know, people of goodwill, we can all, we can all pick the side on, you know, we, we support racial justice and racial equity, and we need to find and build those bridges and, and find the common ground with those folks. And so we need the, you know, we also need to be careful about how, how and when and how we bring people together. So, you know, I, I hear that you, you, you know, there was dissatisfaction for how this incident was, this particular incident was handled, and, you know, look forward to talking to you about how, how we move forward with, with other types of incidents as well.
Well, I'm gonna move Councilmember Davis and allow all the council members to speak, and then we'll, we'll try to move forward with our meeting, and I would encourage that you and the mayor would have a conversation in regards to how to move forward. And there have been some actions in regards to the incident that you have shared, and I'd be more than happy to share those with you.
Well, I haven't seen anything.
Yes, I know.
Yeah.
But we'll, I'll, we'll be emailing you, sharing some, you know, what has happened, and also trying to reach a level of, of understanding and discussion as well. The next, thank you so much, I appreciate it. We'll now move to Councilwoman Sharon McBride, followed by Councilwoman Sheila Niskoski, and if there's no other hands, we'll go back to our, our meeting. And again, we thank the mayor and everyone, the council members for your questions, your concerns, and we're taking note of those as well. Councilwoman Sharon McBride?
Thank you, Mayor, for your presentation, and to Pastor Lee for bringing up that subject, because one of my asks were to get some of the minority doctors locally, get in touch with them and have them partner with us as well about the vaccine, because there are a lot of minorities who have questions and would want to have, whether it's a Zoom or town hall, or something to get those questions answered. So that was something that I had asked a few weeks back, and also, I know with changing of the guards and presidency, we had also been mentioning, trying to get the surgeon general here at the time to answer some questions as well. But I definitely believe that we need to move forward with getting some people that we can trust in our community to ease people's mind about the vaccination, and plus, just questions in general, because there's still a lot of unknowns. But just a matter of fact, giving them to the people of color is a priority. I'll yield.
Thank you, Councilwoman McBride. We'll now move to Councilwoman Sheila Niskoski.
Thank you, President White, and thank you, Mayor, for coming before us this evening. I kinda just wanna echo off of what Councilman Lee and Councilman McBride were talking about, and I guess I just have two questions. One, in our community, as we start distributing the vaccine, vaccines, if we are working like with the LACC, if there's language barriers to also reach that portion of our residents to assure them that it is safe to get these vaccines and that they are eligible to get the vaccines. The other thing is, when you talked about how many vaccines, I've been following this in the paper, and it seems like they said they were coming. I've heard that shipments we were supposed to get went somewhere else, and there's kinda disorganization downstate, is what it sounds like to me, on getting vaccines out into the cities. So have they, which, which hampers your efforts to set up sites, is what my, what my guess would be, or if you set them up like Ivy Tech, you had to pull it down because they didn't get the vaccines there. So I'm guessing you'll probably have more than one site available throughout the city once you find out how many of these you're gonna get? And have they even disclosed to you how many they have in your possession? So I guess for my big thing is, have they disclosed how many the governor has or the Department of Health has? And the other thing is just the language barriers so that we do reach all of our, our residents in our community?
Yeah, there, there's, with the, the vaccine distribution, we are working to get the data sharing with the State Department of Health, and, and that's been a struggle. So the, the questions about numbers, where, and, and all of those things have been difficult to, to have. The numbers keep changing, you know, to the, to our local health department. So, I mean, this distribution plan also has to be looked at from the different channels in which the vaccine will get distributed. So, you know, our Sancho's health system was our county's lead on this, or our health systems have received some, and, and it's gone through, you know, that, our, our health office or officers set up the, the site over there on Western, and, and they had been receiving some. There are questions now about, you know, the future of, of vaccinate, or vaccines being distributed through the health department, and, and of course, we all know that the, you know, a lot of the nursing homes, it was distributed through private pharmacies. And so what, you know, it's anyone's guess, but there could be a shift toward more, more private distribution, which could be leading to, you know, fewer, less access to our health systems and to, you know, our health office. Of course, that's, you know, we know what happens when, when we go to, we rely strictly on the, the private market, is oftentimes that leads to greater access for the haves and reduced access for the have-nots. And so that is something that we're keeping an eye on and communicating to, to the state leaders that, you know, we've got to maintain this ability to, to, one, have sites that are more accessible to, to some, to our communities that have reduced access, and to have the numbers that we need in, in order to inoculate them. So the answer is yes, to all those questions that we, we wanna get to, but right now, we're struggling just to have the vaccines and a site to be able to, to work with going forward, and, and no, no predictability week to week.
Wow. All right, thank you.
Thank you, council members, and thank you, Mayor. We've heard a lot of questions and concerns that have been addressed. Once we have a copy of the minutes, Mayor, we will put those to writing, and those will be shared with you as also with the council members as well. But thank you for coming, sharing with us, and for taking the questions from the council members.
Thank you. Good to see everyone.
Likewise. We'll now move to the resolution portion of our meeting. Clerk Jones, will you please read Resolution 21-01?
I was muted.
Okay, no problem. No, I was just stating that we're moving to the resolution portion of our meeting, and I just asked you to read Resolution 21-01.
Yes. 21-01, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, approving the job description of the community police review board director of the review office.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion to accept the substitute version of Bill 21-02. Is there a second?
I second.
Has it moved and seconded? Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes, that's 21-01, correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
This resolution came before the Community Relations Committee this afternoon and was brought forward to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hammond. At this time, is there a presenter? I do ask you to state your name and address, and give us a brief overview of the resolution, followed by the job description itself.
Yes. Dawn Jones, City Clerk, fourth floor, County City Building. The resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, approving a job description, is a resolution that was designed based on the ordinance. The wording was taken from the, from the ordinance, and it is very similar, or actually, it is the, it is based on the ordinance. And so we were able to also do a job description, which is an appendix to this resolution, that is also based on the ordinance. This is the ordinance to approve the job description for the community review board, so that we can move forward with hiring a director, thus getting board members and moving forward with this venture of the Common Council.
Thank you. Will you now go into a review of the job description? Give us a summary of that. Thank you so much.
Okay. Again, the job description is based on the ordinance. Again, we, I believe this is the third version of the job description. We have incorporated all of the suggestions from council members and from administration, and we have combed over the job description to make sure that it was aligned with the ordinance again, so that we can move forward with posting this job description this week and beginning collecting applications as soon as we post it. I would say probably next week.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I, I would just like to say, you know, I thank the council for, you know, the work that you all have put into it, for providing suggestions and just looking at it and making sure that this is going to be successful. I know that there are still concerns regarding the salary, but as we move forward, we'll see, we see what applications, what resumes we solicit, but I appreciate the opportunity, and I am hopeful that we'll be able to, I guess, get an agreement with a consultant soon, so that'll be the next thing on my list. But I appreciate the opportunity. At the clerk's office, this has been a learning experience for us, and we're excited about it.
We thank you as well, Clerk Jones, and your staff. At this time, our council members, do you have any questions regarding substitute Resolution 21-01? You will have time to make comments after the public hearing portion. I did see one hand up. Councilman Kenneth Lee, do you have any questions regarding the resolution for the job posting?
No, I'll, I'll, I'll save it for the comment section.
Is there any other council members who would like to ask questions regarding the resolution and the substitute, I mean, substitute Resolution 21-01 prior to going to the public hearing portion? I do not see any hands. Clerk Jones, do you see anyone?
I, no, I do not see any hands at this time.
Okay, thank you. We'll now go to the public hearing portion. At this time, is there anyone present wishing to speak in favor of substitute Resolution Clerk Jones, do you see anyone waiting?
At this time, I don't see anyone waiting in the public to speak in favor of or in opposition of this bill.
Jesse Davis has...
Oh, I can't see the hands. I don't know why.
I just saw one hand, and that was Jesse Davis. We ask you to state your name and address for the record, please.
Jesse Davis, PO Box 10205, South Bend, Indiana. I just wanted to say that I am in favor of this. I'm glad to see that it is finally, hopefully, gonna make its way through and get voted on and passed so that we can move forward with getting the people in place that need to be in place to make sure that we have this oversight board.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Is there anyone else present wishing to speak in support of substitute Resolution 21-01? I do not see any hands. Clerk Jones, do you see anyone waiting in the chat?
I don't see anyone waiting in the chat to speak in favor or, or in opposition.
Thank you. I have to ask, is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition of substitute Resolution Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Okay, I'm looking. Again, I don't see anyone wishing to speak in opposition of this bill, of this resolution.
Thank you. The public hearing is now closed. Council members, at this time, if you would like to make any statements, we'll go directly. The first hand that I see is Councilwoman Rachel Tomas Morgan.
Thank you, President White. I made these comments in committee, but I'd like to make them public in the council meeting as well, and that is to express my gratitude to Clerk Jones and her staff for the most productive conversation we had after last council meeting, and for incorporating the, the language of the ordinance into the position description. So working with us and, and the administration on that, I really wanna thank you for your great work. I know that we, we all share the same goal, which is to conduct a successful search for the qualified director to inaugurate this review office, and the position description is critical to a successful search. So I wanna thank you for advancing the implementation of the community police review board and for your commitment in helping us move... and for your commitment in helping us move it forward.
Thank you. The next hand that I see up is Councilman Kenneth Lee.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I first of all want to say to Dawn Jones in the clerk's office, I know that this has not been, it's not been a simple job. It's been a very complex job. And even at times, I wondered, does it really have to be as hard as it is? But coming back and seeing what you have drafted and what, and the importance of putting the language of the ordinance in and seeing the hard work on everybody's part in order to get this done is, it's hopeful for our community because this position is going to help to give peace to people, or at least the citizens, an opportunity to be more involved in the process when things don't go right with law enforcement. So this is a very important step forward, and having everybody involved in it, I think, is going to really be a step in the area of transparency. And transparency does not have to bring divisiveness. I just think it will really bring hope to our community. And so this was very important, and thank you for getting the job done. And it looks like everything is in order. So thank you very much to the clerk's office, to Clerk Jones, and to Rachel for the input that she provided, and for all of those that have worked hard to bring this citizen review board to South Bend and this position. So this is a great, great moment, and hopefully, it's going to continue into a path that's going to be, to make an impact in our city for generations to come. So thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
The next hand I saw was Councilwoman Sharon McBride.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to the clerk's office, to Clerk Jones and her staff, and to the sponsors and the committee as well for the hard work for the bill. And it is a great path forward to continue to have transparency and accountability and to move forward to start some type of healing process in our community. So I appreciate the work. We got a long road to go, but a great start. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other council members who would like to make comments at this time? I don't want to overlook anyone. Any council members? I do not see any hands up. I would like to offer my words of thank you to the clerk, officer, staff. This has been a long time coming, and I really appreciate your willingness to work to the end. And I think that the job posting that we have is reflective of the work that Councilmember Henry Davis and Councilwoman Lori Hammond. This started way back before COVID. And we do know with COVID that we had to really modify the ways in which we be engaged with the community. But now it's 2021. We have the job description. It will be posted very shortly, and so we will be moving forward. So thank, I thank the council, I think the clerk office. I just thank everyone for the willingness to keep pushing forward, and I do expect a great return, and I know the community would be most grateful. Seeing no other hands that wish to speak, I will now entertain a motion regarding substitute Resolution 21-01.
I move for passage.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Substitute Resolution 21-01 has been adopted. We do not have any bills for first reading. Council members, do you have any unfinished business? If so, please raise your hand. Is there any unfinished business? Seeing no hands being raised, we'll move to new business. Would like to share with you that, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Lori Hammond?
It's also under new business. You can go ahead with yours.
Okay, I see another hand too, but I can't tell who that hand is.
Councilman Davis.
Okay, Councilmember Davis, you have any unfinished business that you would like to share?
I think this is more new business.
Okay.
I thought you were heading there, and so that's why I put the button, but I definitely have some new business.
I will start with new business. The first hand that went up was Councilwoman Lori Hammond, followed by Councilman Henry Davis Jr.
Thank you, President White. I just wanted to read a statement from the San Joe County Regional Planning Council. In 2021, the point in time count for homeless individuals is occurring this Wednesday, January 27. The count includes homeless individuals, both sheltered and unsheltered. This is a yearly endeavor carried out by the St. Joseph County Regional Planning Council in partnership with the Indiana Housing and Community Development Authority. The result of the point in time count are usually published by the IHCPA in the summer and are available for anyone who is interested. I just want to also state this number is a critical piece as we move forward in our planning for shelter and care for our unhoused in our community. So we'll have an updated count hopefully by early summer.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hammond. We'll now move to Councilman Henry Davis Jr.
Yes. Last week, The New York Times wrote an article about South Bend. Mayor Pete Buttigieg in his time here in South Bend. And they went on to talk about over $100 million were spent on contracts related to the smart streets and some other things, project. And in that article, they also quoted that only 0.7% of those dollars went to minority or black firms. So I did some math on that number, and I came up with $700,000 out of 100 million. Now, you may give or take a few on one end versus the other, but at the maximum, black firms or minority firms receive 1 million, while whomever receive the greater portion of the 100 million that was out there. Reason why I'm saying this in the new business is that we do have a representative on the MBE, DBE, WBE board, but and also, we do have some controls with what goes on here in the city as it relates to contracts and approvals. I am looking for a new date. If we are able to capture more money back in those environments, the chances of us seeing as much crime as we have been seen and witnessed seen, especially for those who are on the TV committing crimes, meaning a lot of us are black, or a lot of them are black, you will stop seeing that picture in that same story. It's an economic justice discussion. And we have to find, we should want to find a better way of making sure that those dollars are returning back to the communities that need them the most, meaning by a job or getting jobs there. So I'm going to be looking forward to further conversations and policy changes as well as it relates to that because that was an abysmal, it was a deafening, and it was also a very disappointing equation. And it's proven, $700,000 out of 100, out of 100 million. We pay more than in taxes going to buy a bag of chips. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. We look forward to that conversation as we move forward as well. Council members, are there any other items under new business? I would like to share that Mayor James Mueller will give his annual address to the council on the overall finances and general condition of the city on Monday, February the 8th, 2021. I would also like to share that the second working session of the common council will be held on Wednesday, February the 24th, from 5:00 p.m. to 6:30 p.m., and the focus will be on the office of the clerk in regards to policies and procedures and other areas that she deems important to share with us at that time. I do know that there is upcoming committee meeting scheduled for Wednesday, the 27th, 2021. Would someone like to share the topic of that meeting? Any council member?
What was the date again, President White?
I want to say, isn't it Wednesday, January the 27th?
It's the Health and Public Safety meeting.
Public Safety, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Wax, would you like to share? Thank you so much.
I believe there are two topics for discussion on that day. The first would be a presentation from Chief Niskoski regarding potential expansion of ShotSpotter and Connect. And then there is a second presentation, and forgive me if I don't have the name in front of me, but regarding the, an update on the lead initiatives and the current state of lead in the communities. If Councilmember Niskoski would like to chime in. I believe she has more information on that.
Thank you, Councilmember Wax. Councilwoman Sheila Niskoski?
Yes, thank you so much, President White, for reminding me about that committee. I should have brought that up. Thank you so much. And I would like to thank Eli for accepting the invitation to have that presentation in his committee. I have been working for the last, probably since last September, on the lead issue and in particular, Census Track 6. The Lead Affinity Group and NNN had raised some concerns in reference to the remediation and some of the language in the RSVP that addressed lead. Now, there is some unclarity. I've been working through different departments myself, Rachel Tomas Morgan, and Pastor Lee as well, has been included in that. So what we're looking to do is give a history on lead by Dr. Heidi Biedinger to discuss lead in the community, where we, where that came from and where we're at now, basically. And it is my hope as a dialogue, and I was happy to hear Sante talk today when he mentioned that lead initiative in his presentation because we just had a meeting with him. They lost one of the members in the lead program, so he is looking to start reorganizing that so we can better get information out to residents about the grants, dollars that are available to remediate lead and to help streamline the process of what happens when someone from code identifies it, what happens when it goes to the health department, and where is that lost link at to inform our residents that there's dollars available so that our children don't have to live with lead in these homes. So it's a very important committee hearing, or update rather, and I invite all of you to attend. It's going to be, it's going to be a good presentation.
Thank you. I see another hand. Councilwoman Lori Hammond?
I just, in keeping with committee announcements, there is also a Community Relations Committee meeting scheduled for February 9th, which is intended to coincide with the celebration of Black History Month, and there will be multiple community presenters there. So that will be at 6 o'clock on February 9th.
Thank you. If there's no other new business, I'll move to privilege of the floor. Clerk Jones, is there anyone waiting to speak under privilege of the floor?
Okay, I am checking. And I don't see anyone waiting to speak from the public on privilege of the floor.
Thank you. Seeing that there's no one waiting to speak on the privilege of the floor, I would say if there's no other business, we stand adjourned. Thank you so much for all of your efforts, the work. And as I always have ended our meetings since 2020, stay safe and healthy, and talk with each and every one of you very soon, and have a very good night.
Thank you, President White. You too. Good night, everybody.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you, President White.
Take care.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.